Yeah.
Brett's going to be here, right?
Yes.
Okay. I don't see Brett.
Yeah, he's there.
He is? Yeah. Okay. There he is, okay. Okay, it's six o'clock. We'll call the Tremont Planning Board Meeting of March 1st to order. Roll call. Brett with them?
Here.
Beth Goddard?
Here, just a second.
Okay.
Here, make sure I'm unmuted.
Yep, we can hear you. And Jeff Young?
Here.
Myself, Mark Good. And Jesse Dunbar, Town Manager, Code Enforcement Officer, John Larson, and members of the public. Once again, Lawson's still not with us. He's supposed to be back at our next meeting, so I will take a motion to excuse his absence.
So moved.
Second somebody? Okay, motion is second to excuse Lawson Wilson, all in, take a vote, Brett?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
And myself, yes, okay. I guess we'll open the public hearing. At 6:02. Most of you folks.
Go ahead, Jeff. Should we approve some minutes from our past meeting before we move into the other issues on tonight?
We can, if everybody's had a chance to look at them. I know they came kind of late. Otherwise, we can do that at our next meeting. Did everybody have a chance to look at them?
I have not.
I have.
Brett?
I haven't yet, no, I've not.
So Jeff, since we have two members who haven't even seen the minutes, is there a reason we need to approve it tonight instead of waiting till our next meeting?
I had a conversation with Jesse, and just I raised the issue of whether we should approve the amendments that we're proposing before we put them to public and move this on to the next level. And so I just thought it was made a more logical approach to approve the, all the drafts of changes we're proposing for the land use ordinance and site plan ordinances before we go to the public hearing and, and then go to the next steps moving this towards selectmen. That's all. I, I only raised the issue because I don't know if it's a necessary step or not, and I just want to be sure we looked at it in case it was. But we don't have a town council to advise it, so I don't know where to go with that.
Jesse, any opinion here?
I don't think it's a huge issue. You, you and Jeff have seen them. If you think there's something wrong with what's in the ordinance compared to what you made motions on. I mentioned bring it up tonight during the public hearing. But other than that, I left them off the agenda because it wasn't a regular scheduled meeting, just the public hearing, and that's the only reason they weren't placed on the agenda for tonight.
Jeff, did you see something in the minutes that?
No, unfortunately, I approach this more from a procedural point of view than a substantive point of view, and that's it. No, I did not see anything that, so I raise this procedurally should not as a substantive issue.
Brett or Beth, any comments on that?
No.
Well, I'm reading them right now. It looks like the, at least on February 8th, a good portion of it had to do with pointy head, maybe, let's see.
Right, pointy head and you said also the subdivision amendment.
At the end, toward the end, yeah, I'm looking at it right now.
Beth, if you want to take a few minutes to review them, would we?
I don't have access to them. They were sent to the office and the girls didn't give them to me.
Jesse? Is it possible to send them to Beth quickly?
Yeah, he could send them to begod@god'sdisposal.com.
So I review them and at least substantively with respect to the amendments to land use ordinance. I didn't see any issues.
Right, I, I had an issue with the February 8th minutes. And the phrase that she put in there for every motion that we made regarding the campground standards for the purposes of further analysis and discussion, I don't understand why she put that in there. I think that should be stricken from from the record.
I believe she put it in there because Jeff made that a part of his motion a couple times, but I'd have to double check the recording.
And yet she didn't do it on the other one. And how does that change things? Which minutes are you looking at, Mark?
February 8th.
Which one was it, Matt?
It was, I think, almost, almost every one. I don't have a copyright in front of me, but it was almost, almost every motion regarding the campground standards.
Okay. Okay, Matt, and now what did you want? What is it that you were?
Well, she, she says, she got the motion correct, but then she said for the purposes of further analysis and discussion.
Yeah.
I mean, anytime you make a motion that, you know, you discuss it before a vote.
Right. I see what you mean.
You know, what we talked about was the, the fact that there'd be further opportunity to discuss the recommended changes, and I think, you know, part of that's what we're doing tonight, right?
Right.
So I mean, after the public hearing, Mark, what are you envision happening?
Going over the changes as vetted by our town attorney and discuss anything else that that arose from the public hearing itself.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't, I, I think what you're saying is it would be better if it was just a solid, pure, you know, this is our recommendation.
Right.
But it feels like we're gonna do that tonight anyway again.
Okay.
So I don't, I guess I'm not, I'm not gonna die on that hill to get that language removed, but if you really want to, you know, it's fine.
Jeff and Beth, any thoughts on that?
I'm fine the way it is.
Kind of up in the air, I just I don't remember. I guess if we can.
I don't remember that being said for all those either. That was my problem. But she, she did review the tape, I'm guessing. I don't know. I, I think Brett's kind of ideas fine here.
Yeah.
I have to go back to the tape. I don't recall. Some of those are my motions. I don't recall saying that necessarily either, but.
Yeah, yeah, I know, they weren't all Jeff's motions, that's the thing.
But at the same time, I, you know, I, I think as a practical matter, that there is further discussion right now.
Okay, I guess I'll let it go with that.
I mean, the reality is they were compromises made, and I think, you know, and I understand what Jeff was trying to say is, you know, there's, this isn't set in stone. You know, what we did on February 8th. And I think that's probably true. Though I, I, at least from my perspective, I'd like, I'd kind of like it to be so we can get on to other business, but.
Well, we'll need a motion to approve the minutes of February 8th and 15th.
I'll also move on both sets of minutes.
I'll second that.
Motion is second on the table to approve the minutes of February 8th and February 15th. Any discussion? I think we just went through that. Call for a vote, Brett?
Yes.
Jeff?
Did you say Jeff? Yes.
Yes, yes. Beth?
Yes.
And myself reluctantly, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Now let's open the public hearing at 6:13. And folks, I think most of you know the drill. If you raise your virtual hand, you'll be in line to be called on. And please keep your comments on topic and be as brief as possible. And the topic, of course, is amendments to campground standards and what's applicable in the site plan and review ordinance as well. I see Sheila Edison.
Hi there. Good evening, group of fellow Tremont residents and friends and neighbors. I'm Sheila Edison, thank you. My husband David's here, 32 Barnacle Landing, we're in Seal Cove down the road. I'd like to thank the planning board for their work on these dense and complicated issues. The planning board, along with all the town boards, are tasked with having to represent the will of the people through this democratic process. A very public vote last spring made it clear that the community at large was unsatisfied with the campground standards as they are and many or most of the current land use ordinances as well. Hopefully, progress to make these standards more applicable to current community objectives continues with the addition of an actual planner to the mix. Regarding the current item on the docket, campground standards, there are highly visible areas, I think, that the planning board has not ventured to take a tight enough stand on to make them applicable to the community voice. Many here, I hope, will additionally speak to these. My hope is that the board reconsiders its working opinion on these and other items. Building permanent structures like yurts with toilets and showers on campsites needs to require that usable land calculation exclude unsuitable land like vernal pools and needs to require that usable land calculation exclude unsuitable land like vernal pools and steep slopes. These areas must be subtracted or excluded from the calculation. This new version of camping has a much heavier impact on the land. Next, the phase one and phase two situation that we currently have charading as two projects on abutting land, please disallow this. This was an unfair loophole and a downright sneaky way to get a boot in the neighborhood. Also setbacks, especially within neighborhoods, must be set much higher. Infringement of transient businesses on local families must be given higher priority. A hundred foot is bare minimum and not enough in my mind and should be brought to the planning experts. And finally, we must have a standard that requires the developer to calculate the maximum number of visitors on any given night. How else can the town of Tremont prepare itself in all the ways necessary to keep residents safe? Greater consideration to density, groundwater, traffic, public safety, these all equally deserve the highest level of constraint in development. Keeping Tremont the residential gem while promoting suitable growth is a goal we can all share. And finding common ground promotes the unity of community. That's what I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, I don't see anybody else. This could be quick. Mr. Andy Hamilton.
It's been a while, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm losing my voice pretty quickly tonight. It may be helpful to hear from others who are present on this call from AWL. I would just like to say thank you to the board for all that you did in 2021 and in 2022. I view three steps in the present and in the future as very important to the town of Tremont. And I really, as the prior speaker said, I really exhort the efforts to get your own local planner aboard to do your work and not have either AWL or CTR drive the bus. I think it's hopeful to have your land use ordinance amendments. I think there is good work that's been done here. I suspect there's more work to be done. So step one is I think the community needs to see some amendments. I think the community needs to see the product of a planner being brought aboard to work with a very strong planning board. And third, I think there should be further future 2023 amendments. And I will be throughout this process, speaking up for the work of the planning board and against the effort to make ordinance amendments contrary to Title 30A, Section 3007, subsection 6, applicable to already approved projects. I reject the question and the approach that there was a two-phase project. The fact of the matter is there was a 2018 project that was approved. It was the subject of a 2019 appeal that confirmed the 2018 approval. Then a brand new project, AWL arose through input from neighbors and the planning board. We moved from 154 unit project to a 55 unit project. A substantial reduction. And we will be moving forward with both the local process as to appeals and land use ordinance amendments. We're not going anywhere, but my voice is starting to go, so I'm going to conclude my remarks, but I just wanted to say thank you to the planning board for your patience, for all your efforts, all the late nights, the hard work, and there's more to come, but I, I think that everyone should take heart that everyone has had the opportunity to be heard and everyone has had the chance to provide their input into a very robust process. And I just wanted to say thank you to the chairman and to the members of the board for their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
Ruth and Chuck Yizer.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, we're in Chuck Yizer, Seal Cove taxpayers. We, we also appreciate the efforts that the planning board has made to create an ordinance that would allow recreational lodging facilities to be profitable while not disrupting a residential area. There are still some major sticking points that need to be addressed, and they all have to do with maximum occupancy. The maximum occupancy loopholes are just too large. First, the planning board or the planning board ordinance allows the separate lodging facilities owned by the same entity to be built next to each other so that the maximum number of 45 units can essentially be disregarded. Next, a unit is described as three bedrooms, so an expected occupancy of six per unit would make sense. So 45 units would give us 270 guests plus staff. That's a lot of people. The maximum occupancy for AWL 2 is 160, and their traffic report expected 700 vehicle trips per day. This ordinance encourages 1.5 times AWL's occupancy, which means that we would expect over 100, excuse me, over 1,000 vehicle trips per day from any such facility. That's a lot. And with four acres per unit, we'd have sewage from 24 persons per acre. That's a lot of poop. More unnerving is that the planning board did not adopt a maximum occupancy per unit. While the definition of a recreational lodging unit is three-bedroom areas, a unit is not limited to one bathroom, so a three-bedroom unit could easily sleep a dozen people if it included two toilets. Maximum occupancy should be limited in the ordinance, either by limiting the number of bathrooms per unit or by just stating that the maximum occupancy is six per unit. Planning board members have also expressed, often expressed concern about business plans, and they clearly wanted to make sure that owning and development, owning and developing a facility would be profitable. Echo Lake Camp has a maximum occupancy of 110, including staff. It's been around for over 100 years. Quiet Side has a slightly larger maximum occupancy. It's also been around forever. And Acadia Yurts is considerably smaller in scale, and while relatively new, it seems to be doing just fine. Even AWL 2 has a maximum occupancy of considerably less than 270. So clearly, the business plans for small facilities can and do work. We think that you should adopt the CTR ordinance. It's well thought out, well planned, and well supported. CTR's ordinance calls for a sensible maximum of 20 sites with a six-person maximum occupancy per unit. That's 120 guests plus employees. That would be much larger than Acadia Yurts, a little bit smaller than AWL and comparable to Quiet Side and Echo Lake Camp. From the perspective of wastewater, it just makes sense to have two units per acre as opposed to four units per acre. It also closes the loophole of an entity building two adjacent facilities in order to evade limits on the maximum number of sites. This ordinance would allow a profitable business plan for recreational lodging facility while also protecting the quality of life in residential areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Crockett.
Hi, I'm relatively new to these meetings. I have been living full-time in Seal Cove at, on Kellytown Road for the last two years, but I've been a resident of Maine on and off full-time for the last 40 years. I just wanted to echo what Sheila and Ruth just, just said. I think that some of the the planning board ordinances allow too much in terms of the number of visitors that can reside in each unit. I agree that the occupancy should be, as indicated in the CTR petition ordinance, should be restricted to six. And I have a lot of concern about the vernal pool. I'm biologist. I'm concerned about that being included in the, in the total acreage. And some of the other loopholes that have been mentioned by Sheila and Ruth, I, I just can't say that I, I agree wholeheartedly with what's been, what's been said. So I just wanted to echo that and, and yeah, thank you for everybody's hard work on this.
Thank you. Okay, guess that looks like it. Oh, Greg Johnston.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Somebody who works in many different towns, both on the island and in generally mid-coast reason, reason, region. I think going through and having the, the insight to be more specific about a specific use, designating the recreational lodging facility separate than hotels, I think benefits both businesses, both that may be looking at more transient accommodations versus the recreational type camping that you're addressing. So I think more specific definitions for applicants going forward is better. So I see it as shedding clarity where you have found problems in the past due to specificity. And so I commend the changes and how you've brought them forward and been able to bring them forward both in a time of moratorium and, and outside of a moratorium. You've had limited time to bring these together, and I think you've done a lot of work to do so, regardless of the climate that was around you to do it with other applications. So I just wanted to say that I think the changes are well thought out, and I agree that not only do they affect the recreational facilities, they separate out some other business types, which I think is also beneficial to Tremont. So thank you.
Thanks, Greg. I see. Mr. Goldman. Is that correct?
It's Ellen and Ralph Shapiro.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
I said OJ Goldman on the AOL.com. Boy, go ahead.
Unfortunately, I don't know how to change that, but that's my work, work name. But along with all the other comments and all the other compliments to the hard work, any business, including the campgrounds, I'd like to see remain always in local ownership and not go to franchises or large industry, a large conglomerate kinds of businesses. I think that will keep the neighborhood closest to the way we know and love it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Richard Spencer has his hand up.
He does? Oh, I see it now. Yeah, okay. Richard Spencer.
Hi, Mr. Chair and members of the planning board. My name is Dick Spencer, and I've been working on some of the draft language, some of which has been incorporated into the, into the planning board's recommendation. And I have one very, very small technical suggestion for a change in the, in the draft that was prepared by the by the planning board. And that is, it goes in the definition of, there's a new definition of campsites that's been proposed as part of the, of the town's proposal. And it says campsites are included in the definition of recreational lodging facility. And I don't think that's actually factually correct. The definition of campground was changed to say campgrounds are included in the definition of recreational lodging facility. And that was correct because campgrounds are one type of recreational lodging facility. But the term campsite is used, it's, it's used in the definition of camping unit. And it's used in the definition of recreational lodging facility. But it's not, a campsite is not a recreational lodging facility as such. It's just one camping unit in a recreational lodging facility. So I think, I think you should probably leave in the definition of campsite. And the only thing I would suggest, right now, the definition says any plot of ground within a campground intended for occupancy by tents or recreational vehicles or other shelters. And I think you might want to cross out or other shelters because the other shelters are listed now in the various definitions. I don't think it's a major point. But I think that, that the term campsite still needs to be defined separately from the term recreational lodging facility. Other than that, I would, I would simply say that I think, I think from a, from a technical point of view, the changes that the planning board has proposed are consistent with the remaining language in the, both in the land use ordinance and in the site plan review ordinance. But just from a technical point of view, I think that one definition is in error.
Thank you. That's probably a good point, and we'll discuss that. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, not seeing anybody. Oh, here we go. Cindy and/or Steve Lawson.
Hi, sorry, Steve's around, but he's up playing with the kids, keeping them occupied. So I just want to echo what Sheila and Lisa and Ruth said. And thank you to the planning board for the work that you guys have done. We just feel like there were some really key areas missing as far as density, maximum occupancy, the suitable land area, the consolidated ownership. Those were just some big concerns that people had brought up over the last year, and we felt that those were important to address. So, but thank you for the time that you took and to listen and you know, we were really hoping those changes would come from you. So as, you know, I'm sure you've heard by now, we've circulated a petition for some alternative standards to bring to voters at the Maytown meeting. Those standards we brought are very much in alignment with what you as a board recommended. We just felt that it was important, you know, in our advocacy for better standards to, we had a, felt a responsibility to represent the people who voted for the moratorium along with the people who responded to the comprehensive plan survey and, and our community forum that people attended. So. Thank you.
Thank you. Gabrielle Graham. Cynthia Orkut, were you first? No, I think Gabrielle Graham was first. Okay. You're muted, Ms. Graham.
Okay, sorry. I don't, I don't have prepared remarks. I am just, I'm thinking that, yeah, this has been a great love fest between planning board and the town, but there are many ways that the suggested standards differ from what the community wants. The setbacks are not enough. The density is too much. We've been making the point over and over that this is a small community, a family-oriented community. The type of facility that's being proposed, specifically AWL, but also in general that could be created with the loose land use ordinances that we see here is just not what this community wants. And yes, there's a certain amount of necessity for profitability, as someone spoke earlier. It can be profitable with much lesser impact on the community. The other campgrounds that exist are have lesser impact on the community than this proposal or any future proposals based on these ordinances. The setbacks, the 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 number of people per site, the number of sites per area. All of these things need to be oriented, what shall I say, weighted towards the community as it exists and as whose whose desires have been being expressed rather than you know, every getting every little little bit possible out of out of the space. We are, we are tired of being pressured to support a particular campground or future campgrounds at the expense of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Orkut.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Good. My name is Cynthia Orkut. I'm a landscape architect, and I have been working with this ordinance for almost a year. My work with AWL as well as as following the proposed changes. And I think planning board has done a really good job navigating a variety of opinions and coming up with what I think is a good is a good ordinance. There was one thing in here I was actually really happy to see. And that is the elimination of recreational vehicles, trailers. I think you all will remember that the first plan of AWL had RVs, and I think a lot of the issues that people had in the public meetings that we had and in the neighborhood meetings had to do with the impact, especially on your roads, which are incredibly narrow roads to try and envision those huge Harpies driving on them. So I was really happy to see that. I think that that's a great change. But as a planner, there's one thing in here that at least would cause me to be calling your planner for clarification. So I just want to ask if I am somehow interpreting this incorrectly. But it seemed you have two different places where you talk about setbacks. The first one is on, I'm on page 25 of 86. The first one is D1A3, minimum setbacks, which is all new language, and you are asking for 75 feet from property lines, 100 from high water mark and 75 from river streams, wetlands, and 50 from the edge of a right away. That all makes sense. But then if you continue, you have an item four that again talks about setbacks. And here you say 50 feet from exterior lot lines, and then you continue with the 175, and you don't mention in the right away of a road. Both of them are talking about structures. Well, the first one says structures, yurt sites, and the like. And then in four, it says
One second, I want to make sure I'm on the same page as you. Where's the four? Where's four? Okay.
Page 26.
Okay, okay, for recreational camping unit. Okay.
Right. So I guess it to me, if you know, if I was trying to plan a campground using this ordinance, I would be unclear as to whether you meant 175 feet or 50 feet from a lot line. That's kind of the big one that jumps out at me. I don't really know why you need both. I think I would pick one and 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 stick with it. I mean, so that that was really the only thing that that jumped out at me that it might be good to to clarify. But everything else seemed really straightforward, and I thought very well done. Thank you.
Thank you. That's something we should look at and consider. Okay. Mr. Bradford.
Thank you. Yeah, I wish that all of the speakers would either give us the address where they live in Tremont or say, make it clear if they don't live in Tremont that they are actually working for AWL or otherwise have an interest in this this hearing that comes from a place not of a resident. It would just make things a little bit clearer for me. Thank you very much. By the way, I live at 234 Clark Point Road in Tremont.
And you're a year round resident?
And yes, I'm a year round resident.
Thank you. I see Ms. Graham has her hand up again.
I just, I just wanted to say I am a year round resident. I live at 15 Miles Road in Seal Cove.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I don't see anybody else. So we'll close the public hearing at 6:41, if I can see correctly. Thanks, folks. Well, Board, what's your pleasure? Do you want to go through what James has put up for us first, or do you want to address some of the issues raised by members of the public?
I'd look at James' things first and then go to issue by the public because they made a touch on some of that.
Okay, yeah, sounds good. So that begins on page 25. Or maybe 26 on best version, if she printed it up. We there, folks?
Are we looking at the red line of land use ordinance?
Yes. You, you have the latest copy, right?
I think so. I think there's a problem with whoever the board, because it's deleted. It looks like the editor by Chris Saunders, which I presume is not correct. And it shows, it shows deleted times of, it looks like May 5, 2021.
That doesn't sound right.
It does. Actually, actually, no, there's two. It looks like a version, the red line of the version control is May 5, 2021, but the changes made in the document, I'm guessing, are probably Jesse on February 22.
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
I think what I see on page or on page 25 is basically what we were recommending.
Yeah, if you want, I can just, there's not a whole lot of changes from James. In paragraph three at the top of or item three at the top of page 26, he just added, if appropriate, issued a permit by the code enforcement officer. And other than that, down on 12, that was the item. At your last meeting, you were trying to play with the wording that would restrict current RV campgrounds to their current limit of RVs that they have before this ordinance adoption. And you needed some language from James as to how best to word that. So item 12 is his proposal for that. And other than that, all of his changes were just grammar and technical edits to what we had provided him.
Right. While we're on 26, what about Ms. Orkut's concern about four?
I think she's right. I mean, I think what the way I read that, the way I think the way it reads now, you could have, if you look up at D D1A3 on page 25, that applies to the to the structures, and it says yurt sites and the like, which is and the like. That is what it is, I guess. You know, we have the setbacks there, 75, 175, 50 from right away. I and then down below, I think the way that could be read is that while the the building or structure itself is subject to that D1A3, you could have you know, some other ancillary building or some other something else within 50 feet as opposed to 75. So I'd probably just make it consistent and make everything 75.
Right. I do recall this being discussed last February when we did some changes in, and it didn't seem to be a concern of that time, but I think it should be. I would agree that we should change it to 75. And maybe we should make a motion now, Jesse?
Yeah. Yes.
Somebody want to make that motion?
Sure, I'll move that we revise Article 5D for and the minimum setback from from 50 feet to 75 feet for the service buildings and ancillary uses.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion to second on the table to change D4, before from 50 feet to 75 feet. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Brett?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, 4-0. Okay. Jesse, you can continue now.
Oh, Mark?
Yes, sir.
Should we not pass motions on if we're going to accept the changes James Collier has put in here while we're in this section? He put in Article 12, sub Article 12, or subparagraph 12, and he put in the phrase, if appropriate, on number three, subparagraph three.
Yes. I don't want to lose track. I assumed at the end we were going to take a motion for the whole thing, as we might have go through and amend something at this point.
Okay, should we discuss those before we leave this page? We brought them up.
Oh, oh, okay. Oh, if you want to, yeah, sure.
I, yeah, either, that's why I say we approve what he's done or after suspicion or amended slightly or whatever we want to do. I don't think we just move along without us putting some input in that.
Right. The reason I wanted to motion on that is because I was afraid we might forget it, go back. But yeah, okay, so what about three, the if appropriate?
Jesse, did he explain why he inserted if appropriate there?
Because without it, it just said will be inspected and issued a permit. So if appropriate, issued a permit.
Yeah, I wondered the same thing, Jeff, and that was a conclusion that I came to as well, that it would not be appropriate if they fail the inspection.
Got it.
And I'd probably say something a little is are there annual licenses? Is that is it an annual like license? Is that how that works, Jesse, to pay a fee every year?
Yeah, that's what it would be. Yeah.
You know, probably ought to say something like, and if the facility meets the, you know, requirements of land use ordinance or something like that.
It's not very elegant the way it's ordered. I agree.
Because if appropriate, when I first read it, I thought that, you know, does that mean that well, I guess I read it wrong, but I was, it almost suggested that the inspection, the annual inspection is done if it's appropriate.
I struggled. The reason I brought it up is I now understand what's trying to be said. I do think we should clean it up as Brad's expressing.
Yeah, I think it should. Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
Is it possible to ask, would the term be in compliance?
Who's speaking?
I'm Shelly White, and I live at 164 Clark Point Road, but I'm not a full time resident.
This is kind of you like you know what? That's actually a great idea.
Yeah, I kind of like that, too. Ms. White, do you have a law degree? Just kidding.
I wish.
No, you don't.
It was my childhood dream, but it never happened.
I think you've done pretty well for yourself.
Not every dream should come true. You'd be happy.
Some turn out to be nice.
I'm not talking about nightmares.
You know, and if found to be compliance with the ordinance, issued a permit, something like that.
And if in compliance, yeah.
And if found to be in compliance with the ordinance, issued a permit.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
We change if appropriate to this is in D3, all recreational lodging facilities must be inspected annually by May 1, and if found to be in compliance with the ordinance, issued a permit by the code enforcement officer. And thank you, Mrs. White, for that input.
Yep.
Okay, motion is second on the table to change D3 to what Brett said. I can't remember exactly what it was. Sorry. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Brett?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, any other things on this page?
Well, we have number 12 on the number of recreational vehicles that was added.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Number 12, James put in, wrestled with this issue at the last meeting. Are we happy with that language?
Basically, what he's trying to say here is that campgrounds that allow recreational vehicles now will be allowed to continue that use, but they can't expand that use. Is that your understanding? That's mine.
That's mine.
And so your question is, does that satisfy, does the language that James is recommending satisfy that?
Yeah.
I think it works. I think it works.
I, I don't want to open a can of worms here, but I'm going to anyway. Do we know the number that exists as of May 9? How do we know that?
I know that Bass Harbor has it on their website.
Okay. So we have some sorts of information to help us enforce it. Yes, Jesse?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we all sat there then? Yes. Okay, Jesse. I think next is definitions, right?
Yes. Just double check.
Page 71 is what I have.
Page 42, actually, in the parking standards.
Oh, okay, yeah.
James just recommended right behind camping unit, adding the 21, one to one to match the one to two below.
I don't understand why you needed to change that, but maybe you can explain.
If you look in the rest of the parking beyond that, it does say one to one. So it looks like it was just missing in that.
Okay. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
We'll move on then. Now I think we're on 71.
Yep. I don't believe he changed. Let me just double check, but these are These are as you presented them to him.
Right.
Yep. So if you want to discuss, um.
Yeah, campsites.
Campsites, yep.
Included in recreational lodging facilities, definition.
Why did we take out the definition that was there for campsites?
I believe because the new definition for recreational lodging facility says a commercial facility containing campsites or temporary permanent structures. But.
But Mr. Spencer is correct, it's not included in this definition.
Correct.
Right.
Well.
I think the fix he suggested was keep with the the original definition, but we.
Yeah, I think I, that's kind of, I don't, I'm trying to, I I think you're right, Jeff, I, the original definition.
Okay, I got the original right here, I think.
What's in the column here, the changes?
Yeah, you can see it, the red line.
In the red line.
I don't, I don't, if we leave it there, what is it, does it, I don't think there's any other thing that adversely impacts.
Which?
If you leave that, the the definition of campsite, if any plot of ground within a campground intended for the occupancy of tents. Because, I mean, we need campsite because we, 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 the whole uh, density is based on the number of campsites within a acre. So if you don't have that, we've got a huge problem.
So any plot of ground within a recreational lodging facility intended for.
A camping unit, like, is that new? I don't.
Yeah.
Yeah, the camping unit is new.
What, what, so why did that, why do we need that?
It was thrown in with the uh, recreational lodging facility, right, or I'm trying to recall.
Camping unit.
The camping unit was to capture the tent, RV cottage, cabin, yurt. To put them in a definition as camping units.
It doesn't appear anywhere, is it under the campground or recreational lodging facility standards?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
In fact, the one we just changed, about seventy-five feet from fifty feet, uses the expression camping unit. Just that's actually, that section alone.
I'm okay with leaving camping unit. Set campsite that we have to work on.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
My, apparently my hand doesn't show up, but.
Yeah, it's, yeah, okay, yeah, it's, it's not yellow like everybody else's hand.
I don't know why.
Your ceiling there, so.
So maybe I could help with this. Um, the, the idea of a camping unit was that it would include a campsite or a yurt or a Conestoga wagon or anything that was located in a recreational lodging facility. My idea of a campsite was that a campsite would just be a, a, an area of ground that, that had a tent or something that people brought in to camp on as opposed to other structures. Um, and so, so the, the changes that the planning board adopted have, have, for example, limited the number of camping units to forty-five so that it would cover campsites, yurts, cabins, whatever it was. So to me, the, the simple way to do this would be to leave the existing definition of campsite and just strike out or other shelters. In other words, of any plot of ground within a campground intent or within a recreational lodging facility intended for occupancy by tents or recreational vehicles. And then that would be one category of camping unit. And yurts and cabins and other kinds of structures would be other types of camping units.
Yeah, but we'd also have a strikeout campground because we don't have a campground anymore. We have recreational lodging facilities.
No, I suggested that you change that recreational lodging facility.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's the fix.
Any plot of ground within a recreational lodging facility intended for the occupancy by tents, recreational vehicles or other shelter or, or strike other shelters.
Yeah, because you're, because what we're really getting at is that if they're not there. You know.
I think if you just said tents or recreational vehicles, period.
Why don't we use camping unit?
Well, because the definition of camping unit includes a campsite. And the definition of recreational lodging facility includes a campsite. So, so I think if you just say that a campsite is a piece of ground for either a tent or a recreational vehicle, then, then the series that are listed in the camping unit and in the recreational facility definitions both make sense.
Thank you. Board?
Yeah, that's right, I agree. You know, camp, it's, it's campsite, what's left after you look at the other categories, cottages, cabins, yurts, it's just the, it's the sort of traditional piece of land where someone pitches a tent or an RV, it's, it's the site that doesn't have a pre-existing yurt, cabin, cottage, blah, blah, blah. So I, he's, I think, I agree. It's a plot of ground within a recreational lodging facility for the occupancy by tents or recreational vehicles.
Is that a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to change campsites to any plot of ground within a recreational lodging facility intended for the occupancy by tents and recreational vehicles, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or recreational vehicles.
Tents or recreational vehicles. Any discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for a vote, Brett?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Spencer. Jesse? What's up next here?
That's all I have.
Seventy-five, though? The hotel motel, that's what we approved, correct?
Yep.
On seventy-six?
Yep.
Individual private campsite, it's recreational lodging facility, not associated with, okay?
Seventy-nine is, as you had drafted.
Seventy-nine, I don't have anything on seventy-nine, I haven't got eighty. But recreational. Logic facility, okay. Everybody okay with that, the way it is?
Yes.
Okay, and I think it's one more somewhere here. Maybe not. Wait a minute. Yeah, that was the one, that's the last one then, righteous. Okay. Any discussion about what we've heard tonight? I'll address the, a couple people mentioned the fact talking about vernal pools and other attributes in the land, we do have ordinance language that addresses that. First of all, in the, what recreational logic facility now land supporting wetland vegetation and land below the normal high water line of a water body shall not be included in calculating land area per site. And also, if we go over to the we went through this the last time, the site plan review ordinance. Utilization of the site. The plan for the development must reflect the natural capabilities of the site to support development. Structures, lots and support facilities must be clustered in those portions of the site that have the most suitable conditions for development. Environmentally sensitive areas, including but not limited to wetlands, steep slopes, floodplains, significant wildlife habitats, fisheries, scenic areas, habitat for rare and endangered plants and animals, unique natural communities and natural areas and sand and gravel aquifers must be maintained to preserve to the maximum extent. Natural drainage areas must also be preserved to the maximum extent. The development must include appropriate measures for protecting these resources, including but not limited to modification of the proposed design of the site, timing, uh, timing of construction and limiting the extent of excavation. So I think we have something there that covers those concerns.
One of the issues we've wrestled with is wetlands and forests and wetlands, do we look at that at all? Wetlands is such a broad thing and our definitions are narrowed down that, that I'm wondering if we should look at that.
It's probably a good idea to look at it at some point, I'm not sure now's the time, considering that we're facing a deadline. I mean, we're going to have a planner helping us out at some point here.
I, I, I just feel that the forest and wetland air is such a cat, it covers so much land. It, land, uh, forms in our, uh, town that I wonder if we should include that in, in being protected and not being developed, um, for campgrounds.
Hey, buddy, any else have thoughts on that? I really don't have enough information to look at that issue right now.
Yeah, that's kind of how I feel, I wouldn't know, I mean, I kind of want to study, I want to know what the impact is, like, I don't know what that impact is, I feel like we're kind of shooting in the dark, you know?
Okay. Local ownership was mentioned.
You know.
I thi- think the, go ahead.
I, I have a philosophical and emotional attachment to that, that issue, and I know what the when it's been mentioned in the past, what people are trying to encourage local businesses and local using it and not having chains come in and, and people have little connection to our community running this campground, so there is an element that I think has a lot of merit to it, but I don't know is legally forcible.
I think we have a constitution that would, uh, allow anybody to come in and, and do that, you know, I think it's the fourteenth amendment.
I, I wonder if James could look at that issue for us, is there any way we can, one of the things I think what Ball Harbor is doing in, in Airbnbs is they're, they're not making them transferable. And, and that might be a little bit of an impediment towards an outside commercial interest running these campgrounds that may come into existence.
Okay.
I don't think you can put necessarily a prohibition on the sale of land that only people, local people can buy land, right? I mean, you can't do that.
You're not putting a restriction.
Oh, oh, hold on, and then once someone buys the land, what you would, what you would be saying is if you're from away, if you're from here, you have the right to open up this kind of business, if you're from away, you don't. I don't, I don't know, I, I, I don't think that's legal, I, I, I just don't think it's legal, but we can look at it.
Well, before we spend time with lawyers and so forth, looking at, does anyone else sort of have some attraction to the issue be worth looking at? I mean, I, I don't want to spin wheels of no one else is on board for at least the, the concept. Like, I, I think the concept's interesting, I just don't know whether it's going to be managed and done.
Certainly nothing that's going to get done before next Monday. We have to act tonight to send something on to the selectmen. I also have to agree, I don't think it's legal.
I raised that issue when it sort of all up, but there are different ways of addressing things like that, but you're probably correct, we don't have time to do that with our timeframe.
You know, the other thing that was brought up tonight, and I raised it at the last meeting, was the consolidated ownership or control piece. Um, yeah, yeah, I don't know, that makes sense to me, like I and we saw a little bit of that, a little bit, and one of them that, it just feels like I, I don't know why, why wouldn't we do that? I don't know why we wouldn't do that, ha, ha, you know, say, look, if you're, if it's on a money parcel and it's the same quote-unquote owner and the same ownership, you know, it's an affiliate or subsidiary. Yes, deemed to be one.
Are you suggesting, are you suggesting that change, Brett?
I don't know why we didn't do it, I, it's, it makes sense to me, it was raised tonight, I get, I understand the concern, it, you could, someone could string together you know, some parcels and you know, under, with, under shells, companies, different companies, and, and have, and, you know, in an attempt to avoid the some of the restrictions we're having in terms of size. Um, I, I just don't, it doesn't feel that controversial to me, I know, I know, I know that you raised, um, Mark, the issue of enforcement. You know, we're sort of trying to figure that out and untangle it, but you know, anyone can go on the Secretary of State website, any state for free and do like a search on LLCs and owners and you can go to the registry of deeds and see who owns land, I mean, it doesn't mean that we're necessarily going to spend a ton. doesn't mean that we're necessarily going to spend a ton of money if someone's really, really trying to create some spaghetti of ownership, but at least give us a hook. If there's something that's obvious or we, I just feel like we're going to know if it's that, some kind of scenario where someone's trying to do that, and at least gives us a hook to, to do something, if, if it's obvious that someone's trying to do that.
I agree with Brett.
I understand what you're saying, I think the reason that we didn't go for it the last time, we were concerned about, like you said, shell corporations, LLCs, whatever, and actually finding out, I, I really don't know enough to say that.
Well, we can decide, if, if a circumstance arises, you know, we can decide whether we want to hire a lawyer to go and try to untangle it or not. And what, you know, what you do is you just, I mean, look, they're gonna have to, it's part of the application, they have to say who the owner is. And if they're, you know, they're going to be two separate owners, but you, I mean, there's just ways you can, you can trace that back, and I just feel like in it, you know, in a community this small, there's going to be enough, if someone tries to do that, there'll be enough kind of noise about it and we'll know, you know, maybe we should take a look into this, and you, I mean, there are ways to figure it out, sure, maybe you gotta spend, you know, fifteen hundred bucks and go look through the Secretary of State website and go look through the registry of deeds and try to piece it together, but you know, if someone's putting, you know, two parcels of land and ninety camp sites together, we, we would probably look at it.
Have you ever tried to do that? Have you ever tried to do that?
Go through the secretary of state website. And how they, all, all the time, that's kind of what you do.
Very simple, Mark.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
If the planning board is interested in doing that, I did draft language, a fairly simple language, which actually was modeled on the language they use in the state public utilities law, which has this concept of affiliated, you affiliated entities. The way your proposals are written right now, all somebody would have to do would be to create two LLCs, campground one, campground two, campground three, campground four, and they could go forty-five, 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 forty-five. So I drafted language which would essentially do what, what member with them is recommending, and if the board is interested, that language is in the draft I submitted to the planning board.
Jesse, do you have that?
Thank you.
This doesn't feel like that should be that controversial.
So, Mr. Chairman, can I speak to this briefly?
Okay, well, maybe it is.
Yeah, I, I think, I, I think the PUC approach has everything to do with the PUC statute and the setting. The more analogous setting is the main DEP Site Location and Development Act, which uses a specific regulatory test, it's called the Common Scheme of Development Test. And whereas I'm with Mr. Withham, I think this should be manageable. I would suggest that it needs to be done in conjunction with a planner that knows how to do it right, and I think the initial suggestion that Mr. Spencer has made is interesting, but I'm not sure it's sufficient, I think you'd need to take the time to do this right. I have no objection, I think it's actually a good idea, and I agree with Mr. Withham, but I would put it in the context of a planner that can help you develop a common scheme of development tests, because that's what you're looking at, and if you look at the DEP regs, chapter three seventy-one contains a very specific way to do this, I don't like the PUC approach of affiliation, because I think it gets at something that is unique to electric utilities, power utilities, and I think it should be more of a land-based approach, but I think it'll take some time to do right, and I'm not sure you have time tonight to develop a, a test that would accomplish the objective, but I think it's something that should be taken as a suggestion for future change, because I don't think you want to see dots of campgrounds across the landscape, and I, I see the purpose for that, Mr. Withham.
Thanks, Andy. I, I, I hear what Mr. Hamilton's saying and, and, but I, I'd rather have something on the books that we have something that's been worked out by a, a, an attorney that's familiar with this than have nothing at all. And then let the land planner come in and say, okay, let's tighten this up, or let's approach in a different way, but at least we have something we can hang our coat on if we need to.
And who's the attorney that? That you're recommending that we? Remember the phrase, sir, Mr. Withham?
Mr. Spencer. That sense gave us some language and proposal. Jesse, were you able to locate it?
Yep, did you want me to read it?
Yeah, if, if everyone else would like to hear it, yes.
It says, it says, if two or more residential lodging facilities are located on abutting parcels and are under unified or affiliated ownership or control, they shall be deemed to be one residential lodging facility for purposes of this paragraph.
Pretty straightforward.
Well, it has a simple elegance to it.
The deficiency without approach, though, is it does not use a connective task between the land base and, and the developer interest, and again, I'd recommend to you that you take a moment, if you want to consider this tonight, take a look at chapter three seventy-one of main DEPs regs and use a common scheme of development test, I think it's a much more explicit and much more predictable approach, one of the things you're going to get from developers is, it may seem elegant at the moment, but unless it can be applied with particularity, with specificity, you're going to get challenges as to whether it applies to their projects, and so I, I just suggest that you take a look at chapter three seventy-one of DEPs regs, you can pull it up based on a Google search, it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, thank you, Jesse and Mr. Larson. You have any thoughts on this?
It's not often I agree with Mr. Hamilton, but in this case, I think it requires some further review. I know in the shoreline, people have created a narrow strip of land to eliminate the house lot having shore frontage. The DEP has allowed that, they, they have something in the chapter one thousand saying that it has to be as deep as the frontage, so there's nothing stopping someone from having two properties that abut each other and create a buffer strip, creating a new lot of record that would separate them and allow development of both lots. So I think that the common theme of development is a better approach.
Excellent, Jesse. I'm just on the spot here.
I'm just looking at the chapter three seventy-one.
I mean, you could almost, you could almost adopt that. You could almost say. Yeah, I mean, what, what, I think what, the point is that here it's a budding parcels, you could actually, with the, with the common scheme of development definition would actually cover additional activities that the language proposed would not cover, that I, I think we probably we might want to cover, we'd have to think, I think, we'd have to think about it. Oh, it's in the same immediate vicinity. Lots in the same immediate vicinity.
A little vague.
Well, I mean, it's, I, I guess what it's, what it says, though, you, I suppose someone could have a campground and, you know, Trenton and one on the island or one in Mount Desert and one in Tremont, and it wouldn't come within the prohibition. It's, it's broader than a budding parcels.
Yes, it's continuous or non-contiguous.
What do you think, Jeff, have you found that, have you, have you looked at that definition?
The one that, that Mr. Hamilton referred to?
Yeah.
No, I've not, I, I, I understand the concept and maybe is it possible we've incorporated by reference?
If two or more residential lodging facilities constitute a common scheme of development. I mean, couldn't you just say if two or more residential lodging facilities constitute a common scheme of development, they shall be deemed to be one for the purposes of this paragraph. I think that's what we would, I think that's, I don't know, a back of work. Has everyone looked at that right, the chapter three seventy-one, you, you just Google it, it's like.
Eleven pages. I got it.
If you Google common scheme of development, it should, it's like literally the first hit, chapter three seventy-one definitions, common scheme of development. It's broader than, it would take the place of the phrase located on a budding parcels. And it would make it broader. So someone couldn't, you know, or, yeah, someone probably couldn't do two in Tremont. Probably.
Probably.
Well, it's the same immediate vicinity that's, you know, it's a judgment call. But you, you're certainly going to, what you're going to prohibit is the, you know, break next to each other or, or, you know, split by, as, as Mr. Larson suggests, you know, one piece of land, just to, so they're not contiguous, you would, you would capture that and say, no, you can't do that.
Mr. Chair, I'm not sure if you can see my hand, that's been up for a while.
I do now, Greg, yes.
As the discussion goes, and I think this merits to what you're trying to accomplish, the only comment I would have is, is if the intent is also to consider the Bass Harbor Campground and all the other campgrounds that they have, it's discussable business, they are residents of the community, and they have an opportunity to expand what is a modest campground that meets your new changes, either someplace outside in town or adjacent to their property, is the goal of this to prohibit that. And that's just simply part of discussion I think should happen, and now I'll just identify myself as Greg Johnston and I probably get a lot of frequent flyers, not only to this planning board and to many other planning boards, and, and so I'm an interested party on how these ordinance changes affect the town's, you know, regulations, so thank you.
Thanks. You guys have me convinced that it's possibly a good idea, that it's a good idea to look into this. But I, I'm not sure I want to go there tonight, because there's just some implications that I, you know, I don't want to shoot from the hip with this. Without having, you know, someone really look and draw something up.
Yeah, I hear you. I think if we don't, it needs to, you know, I understand why the issue was raised, and I, we do need to make it a priority with the next changes, at the very least, I think.
So you're saying for now, let's not consider that, or somebody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I think so, I mean, there's enough, and just even, there, there's, there's, I think there's, it's a, it's a larger discussion.
I just think. Just like the wetland.
I think so, but I, I, I do think you could take the rifle shot approach and the, the abutting parcels. I mean, that, that is a pretty narrow. You know. Provision, the common scheme is broader, raises issues like Craig just raised, and other things to think about, and what does same immediate vicinity mean? So I. I don't know.
I, I think to go with the abutting, it would, would at least be some protection from happening. And I, I don't know if this is a pretty thought, but wouldn't you take a large piece of property and create two lots out of it and get around some of the regulations by the simple division to lots?
Yeah.
I mean, that could be that easy, I believe. Unless I'm missing something.
No, I think you're right, that's why I raised it.
Yeah, I mean, we don't even need to buy two pieces, buy one piece and cut it in half, you got two lots. Don't even need subdivision approval, if, as long as you won't do more than three. Within five years, whatever the rule is. We could do two, two without a problem. So the abutting lot ones would cover this, this, that simple type of approach to getting around our efforts we've made to regulate some of this.
Yeah, I can get behind that. I think it's.
What do you want to say, but take a stab at?
Well, I mean, I think the language that they have there is, is okay, if two or more residential lodging facilities are located on, on abutting parcels and are under unified or affiliated ownership control, it should be deemed that one residential lodging facility for the purpose of this paragraph, I, I, I think that's, it's not perfect. I think we'll need to revisit it, I think that, but I think it, it at least, you know, puts a stake in the ground on that very simple scenario that Jeff just outlined, where someone could buy you know, I don't know, a big lot and, and split it in half and took forty on one and thirty on another.
Right, right. Well, if you, if you move that, I'll second it, Brett.
I will move that we adopt the proposal. Well, I'll move that we add a provision in the land use ordinance where if two or more residential lodging facilities are located on abutting parcels and are under unified or affiliated ownership or control, they should be deemed to be one residential lodging facility for the purposes of the supplemental standards for recreational lodging facilities.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table. Any discussion? Jesse?
Yeah.
We're going to be able to run this by James quickly before Monday, you think?
Yeah, and he'll be at Monday's meeting.
Okay, okay, so. If he wants to make a change, we wouldn't be able to approve that change in time.
No, but you don't have to.
Okay, that was my concern.
Yep.
Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Brett?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay. Anything else?
Is that a general question, Mark?
Awesome weather over there in your way, Jeff, yeah.
I, 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 I would like to, I, I think out of courtesy of people who put a lot of time into attending our meetings and, and, and giving us some input, I think we should address a couple of the other items that were raised by more than one of our residents. And we have addressed them, but I think we just should be, see if we're comfortable now, having heard from the public, which we talked about before, although we're still comfortable what we've done already, and specifically the issues, if my notes are right, or the setbacks, we have seventy-five people pushing for a hundred, I remember Brett's conversation, how we went from fifty to a hundred to seventy-five, but do we want to look at that again, density has been a big issue by a number of. Brett's conversation, how we went from 50 to 100 to 75, but do we want to look at that again? Density has been a big issue by a number of the residents. And I know we wrestle a little bit with it, about six or eight per unit. And the calculations that were provided to us tonight by one of our residents sort puts a spotlight on the issue of density. And last, my notes is maximum number campsites. We are, I think, at 45 and so looking at 20 and there's lots of space between 20 and 45. So I was wondering if we should at least give some thought to those those three issues that we've not addressed since our public hearing. Closed.
Board? I tend to think we addressed a lot of those issues at previous meetings pretty thoroughly. I mean, the maximum occupancy for the per camps camping unit came up again tonight.
What was referring to, yes?
But I don't think it really accomplishes what they're trying to, you know, is trying to say campground has to have a a maximum number of people. But by doing that through mac maximum occupancy of a camping unit, let's just take two camping units and let's use eight as the maximum occupancy. That means 16. But one could have 12 and the other three. Right?
I don't follow that logic. If he's trying to come up with a formula as to which was, I think, being expressed to us to to max out the number of of transient individuals.
And I'm saying the formula doesn't work. Because it 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 it's predicated on the fact that each campsite, each camping unit has to be at a maximum occupancy. And that's not going to be the case.
I know each campsite has a maximum occupancy. It doesn't have to be at a maximum occupancy. You're going to have six. If you put the cap at six per campsite, campsites can have four, two, six, but they can't have seven or 12.
I understand that.
And then I don't follow your example. I might be dense. I don't know.
If if the if the idea of maximum occupancy per unit is to set a maximum occupancy for the campground as a whole, that's what I'm talking about. Is that the idea? I think the. Hold on, you're both talking. Go ahead. I think the idea is that you said it on a per site basis.
Correct.
At least that's how I understood it. You you know, there's I understand the the thinking that has some sort of facial appeal to it, but I I guess I I I'm just being a candidate here. I just don't it it's like a solution looking for a problem. I live down the road from campground that that there's campgrounds over there. I I'm not aware that there's like people packing into a tent. Like, that's not it one. So I'm not sure that it's actually really a problem. One, and I see a lot of people shaking their head because they know they visit campgrounds, they audit them, they absolutely know that that's happening.
I don't think the owners of the campground are going to want that. I would.
I mean, they're not going to want the right, exactly. A campground owner is not going to want that. The other issue is. The other issue is enforcement. I mean, what are you going to do? Like, have it is like the code enforcement officer going to be around like on a daily basis, checking campsites or on a nightly basis? Because it changes during the day. You're going to have people coming into a campsite. They're going to have friends come over and visit. There's got to be 15, 20 people that are on a campfire having beer, then they're going to go away and you're going to have people you're going to have people then sleeping. So so I guess you're going to have someone come in at night and figure out how many like on a daily basis and try to figure out whether, you know, how many people are sleeping in that room that night. It it's just it's just it's just absurd. It's it's not how it just doesn't make sense for a campground.
You already have an ability to enforce it indirectly is that you have a campground owner, as Beth has pointed out, who's concerned about the operation of the facility and they are now on an annual permitting process. They want to be conscious, they comply with what the regulations are. So you you have enforcement internally by the owner.
But how are you going to? But but there's a natural, they're naturally going to want to do that because they don't want they don't want a bunch of people, you know, too many people in their campground, it's campsite either. But I again, how are you going to enforce that? Someone going to go and check?
I I think an owner becomes more responsible when they know their license needs to be renewed. And and they're they have campers coming in, putting 12 people's marks at one camp.
Do you really think that's a problem now? I mean, has anyone gone around to the current campgrounds or have to see if that's actually a problem?
That's not a problem. I I I just think it's I don't think we need to do it. I think it's going to take care of itself.
Um, can I say something?
This is discussion. I'm sorry, Ms. White. This is discussion of the board right now.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't understand. Okay.
Yep. Jeff, you want to make a motion?
Sure, I'd be happy to make a motion that move that I believe we should put a a ordinance in that limits the occupancy per camp campsite six individuals.
The other second? Hearing none, the motion dies for lack of a second. Jeff, were there any other issues you wanted to discuss?
Well, the only ones that came up were maximizing number of sites per campground. And and the setbacks that we it does anyone want to revisit what we did the last time after having heard from the public a little bit?
I mean, these things aren't new that we've heard from the public. Right? We heard them before.
Mark, we had a public hearing for the sole purpose of getting input from the public on these new changes of the ordinances.
I understand that. I understand that. We 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 had several public hearings. And we've heard these these things aren't new necessarily. That's all I'm saying. I mean, I think we heard earlier too, that they're going to submit their own proposals. So at this point, I feel like I'm not even sure what the what's the point of us doing anything further if they're submit their own. I mean, I I would give the voters even more choice then. I mean, if if they're going to submit one that's that meets exactly what you're suggesting, Jeff, then we'll have a pretty good spread, right? We'll have the, you know, exactly what CTR wants, we'll have a compromise based on, you know, sort of representative discussion. And then people can choose between those.
I I I not going to beat my head against the wall. I'm the only one out there thinking about changing this or looking at it a little bit more. So we can go on.
I'm happy with 75 feet.
And ordinances can always be changed. Yeah, I mean, they will be, right? I mean, the I know we we need to get the comprehensive plan kicked started again, for sure. Okay, any more discussion? Otherwise, I'm going to call for a motion to send our proposed amendments to selectmen for inclusion on the town meeting warrant. The Maytown meeting warrant.
So moved.
I'll second. Motion is second on the table to send our proposed amendments to selectmen for inclusion on the Maytown meeting warrant. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. Brett? Yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay. We need to schedule our next meeting. That's March 8. And before we actually do that, we should discuss, do we want to go back to in-person meetings?
I would like to see us go back to in-person meetings.
With masks.
Jesse, it's do it for masks at Town Center?
Yes. At the moment.
I think we be safe to go another two, one or two meetings on Zoom and then go back live. Let's see if this is really on Wayne going out.
Yeah, I'm kind of on the fence too, but that we should discuss it. Brett, any thoughts? I'm on the fence too. I think we should, but I think we should explore going back. I we are back to work. But we are wearing masks. And doing all the other stuff. I mean, well, I I guess I frankly haven't been paying attention to what the states said lately, or is Hancock County still like orange or something? Or isn't there like a code, like a color code?
Yes, we have.
Our agenda for next Tuesday is going to include completeness hearing or completeness review for Pointy Head. And a the.
Pre-application.
Yeah, pre-application conference on Thurston's Marina Plan.
I will one more meetings to the status of our county is by Zoom and we'll look at it next meeting for the following one.
Well, do we meet that? I I don't know what the legal requirement is anymore. What is the like, isn't it? Isn't there something like some sort of requirement we're supposed to meet in order to do that? Is that still like, I don't know if they've relaxed that or what that is or what cue column does? Well, let me ask you this. What's the board of selectmen do?
Board of selectmen has been meeting in person. They have been all along. The requirement is pretty strict in that the intent is if one of you has COVID and wants to participate in the meeting, you could do it remotely and attend the meeting. Back when these were first adopted, was right about the time cases started spiking rapidly in Maine and in Hancock County. So it was determined that it was most likely not going to cause an illegal issue if you determined due to the rise in COVID cases. It was safer to meet on Zoom. I'm not sure that that would still be the same with a decrease in COVID cases. The state's intent is pretty strict on attending remotely.
The selectmen have been meeting in person for how long now?
Since June of 2020.
Harbor Committee, too.
Harbor Committee, yes.
Did you say since June of 2020, they're meeting in person?
Yes, they've had occasional Zooms, but probably five total in the last since then.
Okay. Is there a maximum number of people allowed in the meeting room?
The state doesn't have any requirements on spacing or indoor capacity. Those all expired.
Does the town put any in?
No. And the chairs are still spaced, but we don't have a actual number.
What are you thinking?
You heard my suggestion. I think we should go at least another meeting and review at the end of next week and see how the numbers are looking Hancock in our area.
Can we legally do that, Jesse?
I think you're probably going to be fine for another meeting.
There's a new, even more transmissible variant that is in in Maine now.
Oh, my God.
Where did that come from?
Omicron two, they're calling it, I believe.
Yeah. Okay. What do you say? Zoom one more time? I'm kind of one more time. I just I think there's going to be a lot of people the next one, my guess. My guess is there's going to be a lot of people at the ones after that, but. Well. Yeah. Okay, I'll call for a motion to schedule our next meeting, March 8, 6 p.m. by Zoom.
Second. Did you move that, Mark?
I didn't make a motion. No, I.
I'll move that.
Motion. Okay, okay, motion is second on the table to schedule our next meeting for March 8, 6 p.m. by Zoom. Call for a vote, Brett?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Beth?
No.
Myself, yes. Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, anybody?
Mark?
Yes, John.
When you make the motion, you made out you we need time when you.
I said 6 p.m.
No, no, when you adjourn.
A time to adjourn? I need to make a time?
Yes.
Okay. I don't think I've ever done that, John.
I know it doesn't show up in the meeting, the minutes, because there's no motion. It just has a motion to adjourn, but the motions say motion to adjourn at 7:52.
Okay, I'll take a motion to say that we're adjourning at 7:52 p.m.
I'll second it, or I make a motion.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second on the table to adjourn at 7:52 p.m. All for a vote. Brett?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, good night. Thanks, folks.